Bear with us.
Yes, say it again, please.
Renee, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, you're on, you've got the mic and you're gonna introduce some new employees.
All right, I'm going to roll back from January forward. We have Sabrina Scholes, she just started with us, she's our new senior billing specialist in finance. She'll be taking over all the, whatever water billing there is. In the police department, we've hired three new, four new hires. Charles Lowry, Zach Stroh.
Sorry, that's Dex Lowry.
Yes, thank you. Justin Farron and Joshua Jolly. Charles and Zach are currently in field training, they're out of the academy now. They joined us in January. Justin joined us in June, he is at Baltimore County Police Academy. And Josh Jolly just joined us on the 16th of August and he is in the Maryland Transportation Academy. So hopefully those two will make it through fine and we'll have them onboard and out in a patrol car before too long. Public Works, we have a new hire in June, Daniel Jones, he's a maintenance worker. He joined us as a part-time seasonal person. We have Kevin Ellis and Jeremy Kevler, they both joined the Grass Crew. They're both doing fairly decent. And then we have Logan Huff, who just joined us on Monday, he's on the Cement Crew. I met with Logan yesterday and he's just very upbeat and so happy to be here at the town. So that's the kind of employees we wanna hire. For Parks and Rec, we have part-time people Sarah Bascal, Tara Phipps, Margaret Sprouse, Sarah Smith, and Skylar Greigson. All of them joined through the summer to work in the camp and I'm sure they'll be back next summer to work, continue working in the camp. Full-time, we hired Amanda Easter, she's our rec coordinator too. She's also our dance instructor, so she'll be dealing both roles. Still involved in the dance part in the evenings and doing the rec coordinator, helping Mary and Chaney with all the day-to-day running. We still have open positions for the police patrol officer, HR director. We do have several resumes that we've received and I believe Michelle is giving those to Louis this week. And we're still looking for maintenance workers, cement, or part-time seasonal. I used to do these announcements with new hires by email. If you would like, I could start doing, starting that up again of sending emails out when we get a new hire. But that's entirely up to the board members.
Renee, I think it's important for us to know who our new hires are. So if you wanna do it via email or do it Zoom meeting like you've done today, either would work. Anytime we have a change in position, I think it's good for us to know that also. I think that, I don't even think we've recognized Michelle as our assistant town administrator. I think that that's something that we, I think that the public certainly should know moving forward and I think these are things that are good for us to recognize. I did have a question, if you could answer it for me. I see that we had hired Amanda Easter in the Parks and Rec Division?
Yes.
And she's also a contract employee, how's that work?
She was on, she was on the books as already as our dance instructor. Not really contracted, she was our part-time dance instructor and heading up that program. So Mayor, what Mary did, sat down with Amanda and they talked about it and if she's doing the combined role, that is part of her job description going forward. Is to do full-time and then still do the dance. She still wanted a hand in the dance, she's been doing the dance program for a long time.
Okay, I think that we need a little clarification on it because I think in the past she was, she would run the dance program and I think she shared, had a shared revenue, I think in that program. Now maybe I'm incorrect in my thinking, but I thought there was some type of shared revenue.
Okay, that I don't know, you would have to talk to Mary about that.
Okay, well, we probably need to get that squared away because I don't think that we should have a contract, if it's still going that way. It's not good, Lou, you're giving me a shake here, is it, it's not happening that way?
No, she's getting one salary from us and whatever she was getting paid on dance has stopped. It's all rolled into this new salary.
Did you have a question?
I have a question. The last guy that resigned, got the position because he filled out an application. He resigned and then next thing, it came to our understanding that there needs to be a new hire player. Obviously, we went out and told people about that position. And then when they informed about it, the position was appointed within. So does your theory as an HR or is it written somewhere where that should happen? On one hand, you go out and you submit applications, then on the other hand, what you're submitting for is done internally because that person was appointed. It doesn't give a person a fair shake. I mean, the person you have hired, I see has done a decent job and going forward, there needs to be a lot of consistency someplace, so not only you and the people who are in that department and we as the mayor commissioner should have some idea so that all of us will be under the same umbrella. Without any doubts.
Typically, when a job becomes open again, we reopen it as internal posting. There are some jobs that get posted internally and externally, but an internal candidate always takes, if they have the qualifications for that job, most likely would be moved into that job as long as they have the qualifications over somebody from the outside.
I understand your point, but we don't know where the issue, I'm just saying, you know, give us something in writing for how these changes are vulnerable or fair. If I don't sit on the board and think one thing and it's something else. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a comment about that, I'm trying to hold my peace on this, but I've been approached several times when a couple of people put their applications in. I don't hire people, I don't sit there and try to handpick them either. But I've been approached several times since last week about the qualification for a recreation director versus someone who is a dance person, not this Sasha Amanda because it's just a friend of mine. But the trouble is, I'm getting it on both sides then. To give a job that somebody already applied for as qualified as a director and then someone else just gives the job because someone's working there, to me does not sit too well. Again, as a talent official, I don't wanna be labeled as someone just slides in my into a position because I've been down that road several times, I'm getting a little annoyed by watching and seeing people in their own community can't get a job because someone else has been picked or given a position. So I really feel though, that position there should have been given to someone who has applied for it and has filled the application out, not just given to it because someone's sitting beside another person. And I'm gonna stand firm on that.
I'm not sure who applied for it on the outside, but I know initially when it was posted, before we hired the other person. We only had about four or five applications come in, if that. So if anybody is telling you they applied in the last few weeks for that or prior to Amanda getting it, I had not seen that applications come in. And I would immediately have sent them over to Mary and Chaney to look at.
So when the application that did come through, did you go back through them and try to figure out? But no, you went first internally, you did not go back through the applications.
Before the other gentleman was hired, we interviewed three, three people. And that was, one backed out because she received a job elsewhere. We did background on the other two, laid everything out and that's how we chose the other person, candidate. When he left, that's when we internally posted it. And Amanda came forward and said she would like to do that job because she's done a lot of the other jobs that's there. There's other times that we have pulled Amanda in to work, cover the front desk when they were at 219 North Street. So she has, she is aware of, you know, the job and she has done those jobs in the past. So that gave her basically a foot up also. It's not like she came in cold turkey just from the dance perspective. She was also on the books as a part-time person working for in-the-day campus needed.
So I would like to see the Parks and Rec or the Community Center build from activities, different sports where I have a director that's gonna run the program, not just someone who'll sit at desk and answer with the phone or whatever. So I'm seriously, I am really, really struck on this because all the years that I've been involved with sports and whatever, recreation, I've never seen someone just come in and take a recreation position because they're in on the books. I don't appreciate the way this is handled, I don't have nothing against the person that you pick, but I just don't like the process.
I, I would like to see more people from the community also get over there. And I would like to see what you want for that community center. I can, you know, Louis and I can sit down and have a conversation about this.
Very good.
All right, you're welcome.
Hey Lou, we're gonna go right to the employee of the quarter presentations if we could because we've got a pretty good crowd in here, so we'll, we'll go with Lou or do you want Dan Handley to handle it? He's in here? You're muted. You're muted, Lou.
He started to say something a while ago.
You're muted, Lou, don't worry about it, I'll handle it. Okay, the employees of the quarter presentation. All right. Well, here we go, the fourth quarter of 2020 and I'm not sure the reasoning, Dan, you wanna tell us the reasoning?
I can do that.
All right, we're gonna let Dan tell you the reasoning behind our 2020 fourth quarter winner.
Good afternoon, mayor commissioners, I'd like to talk to you about the fourth quarter recipients for employees of the quarter. Oh, how do I bring this one up? It's, there's normal day-to-day activities, there's normal, oh, where this comes from activities kind of stuff. And then there's above and beyond. And this particular group, gentlemen out here, what happened is, there was a major, there was a, we encountered a sewer leak. And most of the leaks you can probably get around, but this is literally, if you look under the map on nowhere, it's under the dud. This is literally in the woods. The fact that these guys found it, which is amazing, see what, and we actually addressed it in the single day. And most times for sewers, you can back it up, you can cut them off and fix them. No, this is an active force bay. So they had to go out there, fix the force bay, why it was so active and prepare everything. It was amazing what they did because it's professionalism, more important is, they did their, the quality of work really speaks why I'm on to what because it was a very difficult thing. In fact, just getting to it was probably about, probably about half mile, two quarters of a mile away from the road. And to go underneath like, you know, we went to dig out roads just to get to the area, so. These guys really stepped up, above and beyond it, just make sure they all get recognized and that's why I got a quarter of 20. Anyway, here's second quarter, second quarter.
Yeah, when we have a.
So start, it's that second quarter.
Wanna start with the second quarter?
Yeah.
Start with the second.
We're four back.
Okay.
This is, yeah, so these guys did it actually in June, so we're four backward, we're waiting for it. Okay, so these are our representatives for the second quarter of 2021. Maybe I'll bring them all up to you, guys, get up and get a good check some air, okay? We've got Ben Ramey. We've got Mark Turble, but he's not here, unfortunately he's out. I'll get Joe Stanley. I got Walter Scott. I got CJ Buckland and I got Morgan Caves.
Thanks, sir. John, you guys take the picture?
Picture?
Hang on, I have to do the picture. John, get the picture.
There you go.
You're good, you're good, just don't forget you're all there and. Get a great background, get in there, man. Stop in there. Can you turn it sideways?
I saw you at the Elton football game.
My channel, okay. Michelle's got it, yeah. Good? All right, guys. All right, first quarter 2021.
Yeah, well, that's right, yeah, exactly. These two gentlemen, I guess going back to figure out, January 2021, the first quarter, we just got a COVID and we're still in the middle of the meter installation program, there's a lot of protocols and everything. And these two gentlemen back here, just they went door-to-door, they're rock solid, we made deployments. Actually, they went with the residents, when the process is switching out the meters, that maintained professionalism, maintained safety, public safety, at the same time, they did pretty well, so. For the first quarter, I mean, how many of these two gentlemen, what they say, is anchor aguilar, Cliff Houston.
Thank you.
All right, let's get it, what you're saying. Squeeze in there. All right, big smile, big smiles. All right, thank you.
Our last guy's not here, he's not here. What we're talking about, for the fourth quarter of 2020, our representative's name is Mike Campbell. Mike Campbell recently retired from us. Basically, Mike worked for the town of Elton since 2005. He had a history, I think he was with the police department a while before that. Actually took on the sewer crew for a while, he was on insurance or a safety program. And he actually, he was instrumental in starting the whole meter program itself, so. Again, we've had over 5,000 meters, which is so far, it's a lot of coordination, he's done a great job with it, you know. Mike's, like, he retired back in March from us and unfortunately can't be here today, but, you know, I just want, except as long as we ask, he did very good, so thank you for the.
Thank you, guys, thank you all. We couldn't, we couldn't get it done without you guys and I have to tell you, the We're Main break that we had on Main Street the other day and I know the whole team contributes into that and your efforts of trying to help the small business person, working the late hours. We applaud you for all your efforts and great job. Okay, next on, Brad, you wanna take the lead here? This is the traffic control, or the traffic design group recommendations regarding the outdoor dining. We invited Brad Krulow, president of the Elton Alliance and we wanted to talk a little bit about as we move this dining permanently, we wanna make sure our calls were all along to make sure that we were doing this safe for the folks sitting here, eating their meals. We found that there was, across the country, cars were bumping into the areas. We wanted to make sure that we were doing the right thing, so I, I know the Elton Alliance hired a traffic design group right here in downtown Elton and there were some recommendations in general that came to us and can you kind of put that together for us? Yeah, that'd be great.
So you encapsulated kind of what we were doing. COVID hit, we wanted outdoor dining, so Elk River and Central invested in outdoor dining. Initially, we were given temporary status and then we kept, you know, extending that, extending that. And our intent is now to come in front of you as the alliance and ask for permanent status for outdoor seating. And as part of that process, we did hire our traffic engineer that, I think you guys have the report that set out the criteria to have outdoor dining that we would suggest that we need to follow moving forward, should anybody else request to do it. It gives us a baseline on how to do it and it's been very successful, we've had no incidences. We have had great outpouring, it's used every day that we're open. People love to be out there, so I think it's a great amenity to the town, it's a great amenity to the businesses. And we are here kind of to ask today that we may make it permanent for outdoor dining based on our traffic study and following, adhering to those standards and that's kind of the request for today, just to finalize that process. We've come before you several times to ask for extensions and we'd like to make it permanent. Are there any questions for us or maybe Becky from C3 is also here with us? So I'm the alliance, but I also represent Elk River, so we are the two that have the barriers. If you guys have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer them.
Actually, I think the outdoor dining has been an asset to our community. My personal feelings, it certainly has been. I know that the challenge has been, and I know from the central side, from the hiring of employees and keeping the kitchen open and so forth, I mean, that's been a major issue for you. One of the things that I hear from the other side is that they come downtown to enjoy the outdoor dining and there's a lot of times that we're not open. And I know that that's one of the money in the Tuesday is the way it's been. I know that you're closed also, money and everyone's entitled to have time off, I absolutely recognize that. But one thing that really sticks with me is I think that we need to come up with, and we need to do it as a team here, is come up with an idea of how many days that we should be closed because it's only during the summer hours that we'll be using this anyhow. So during the winter hours, when you're using the outdoor dining, if we, if we're looking at it from, we'll use it, of course, anytime during nice weather. But I would say that we're looking at from, let's say, St. Patrick's Day through fingers crossed that we could go as far as Thanksgiving. I'd like to know, you know, that it is gonna be used, you know, is there a certain, can we kind of agree on how many days a week that we could be using this as a, as a group here? And I don't need that answer today.
I mean, this is. With us because we wanna kind of understand what we're doing. I think we're, the intent, I think for both of us is to be open six days a week. We've all had one day off here or there. You know, pending extraordinary circumstances, I think, I think you have a great point. If there's businesses on Main Street that are open weekends only or a couple of days a week, it doesn't make sense to occupy spots. So a parameter of time, six days, you know, six days seems reasonable to give everybody at least one day. But we have to be somewhat flexible with.
Without question.
Extending within circumstances, so I think, I don't wanna speak for Becky, but I think that we're, you know, Elk River's open six days a week. We are experiencing the same issues with staffing and luckily, we haven't had it for seven days. But when Becky gets full staff, I think your intention is to be six days a week.
My intention is to be back seven days.
Seven days.
I see the balance, so.
And to touch on the St. Patrick's Day to hopefully Thanksgiving, we already purchased quite a bit to hopefully make it year-round with the exception of January, February could be spotting for snow.
Yes.
But we purchased.
Heaters?
We purchased a pretty high heaters and then two propane enclosed fire pits. So, and we bought embroidered line bits. So like, if you sit down outside and you get a line of footrests.
Oh, nice.
We're thinking ahead so we can almost get it down to probably those two months where the weather is just wet and simple. And also, we're up, we're here for, I live, everybody knows I live in town, I live two miles away. When we're closed, I have no issue opening our outdoor for anyone to enjoy, get a cup of coffee and come down and sit in my area. That's a concession that we need to make. I'll open and close that every day that we're not even open, even if we can't get back to Mondays. We wanna get back to Tuesdays, today, like, this is not in the plan, this is a, you know, across the country problem, I'm, we know that, we're not victims. Just know, Central wants to be a seven-day operation again, if not six, we'll probably put it in for this, it had first, actually open six days a week, and do what's necessary to utilize it as much as possible.
Yes.
Like Brad with the heaters, that, that was perfect when St. Patrick's Day, that heater came out and it never went back. It went in your area and people use it all the way to the summer.
Yeah, and I think for us, if we can make it more, if we get the ability to make it permanent, we can also make more permanent adjustments to that area. So Elk River, for example, we haven't done any decking. You know, we weren't sure that we wanted to spend the, you know, make that out there, like, like what Central did. We would do other things to make that more permanent and inclusive, if possible, let me not do a good chip, you know, some of that stuff. But in, you know, enclose the area in the colder months, you know, and heat it, you know, those are things that, you know, we, we Elk River plans on trying to utilize it, once it's permanent, 12 months a year. We, people love to sit outside, even in the cold, last year people would sit out in the cold because of the virus. But if it were warm and we had fire pits and, you know, the, you know, gas propane out there, that would work. I think people would sit out there year-round, even if we could get it closed somehow. And if we get permanent status, then I will spend the time and effort and energy to.
And we would too.
Do those.
We would, we would spend the money to, we would spend the additional money, I should say, to do some sort of enclosure that maybe could be removable from winter to summer. Because the plan right now, like, our shades will come down, the gills will block, we have a plan in place. And we will spend more money because we're about changing the landscape of Main Street. We wanna make it, we wanna change the landscape of Main Street, we wanna take the momentum we had in 19, or whatever in Central had and we wanna run with it again if the virus is done. And we're willing to invest in that. It's investment for us with the town, because we have a plan, I won't anywhere, anytime soon.
Is there any questions from the board?
Yes, Becky, so what, what is your seating capacity right now?
Inside, I'm only a 65.
No, outside.
Outside. Okay, outside, the seating is 16.
Problem's bigger than that, but.
Well, it's 16 because of spacing. I could put more tables out there, but we didn't want to pack.
And Brad, what is yours? I think we have probably 12 to 18 spots, but in a busy day, we have people standing that like to stand outside and but the capacity is probably 15 to 16, so we have different kinds of seating, we have chairs that we built and we have some tables, we actually, we shortened it by one space to make sure that we're compliant, we both did to be in compliance with the two-space maximum, so that dropped out a pit and table that we have.
So even what you have, even though that's very accommodating in the field and pretty much a lot of local towns and what have you, you move enough people around, the people get the advantage of being able to sit out there just a little bit.
I'm sorry, we're 20, I can't count.
Okay.
And that's what's facing, but we could put more, and yes, we need to terminate over quickly. We're a pretty quick turnover place and as Brad said, on days that, I'll use red, white and blue as an example, the whole area was filled and then people were just hanging out in there because they could hang out in there. And then non-events where they don't have luxury walking around, it's nice to just be in there and they really do follow the rules. They don't sit on the ledge, they, they, the community has been pretty amazing because they really like it and they don't wanna say a foul word.
We've had zero, I mean. We've had zero, I mean, issues with any of our patrons or town patrons, you know, people walking by. They're open, you know, we have those yellow chairs out in front of the brewery if you drive by the right next to the entrance. They're used all day, all the time, and people sit there and take a break and keep walking and moving around. So. Um, we're open to the same thing Becky is. Our stuff is more weather resistant outdoor seating, so it's there. If it's good weather, you know, they can sit down when we're open. We feel cushions and we have blankets and.
And we've done that. We've sent people to Elk River when in April, when it was beautiful and not, you know, a hundred and two. Uh, and our outside was full and our inside was full and they weren't open yet. People got takeout and sat right over Elk River because of our partnership and I knew. And it still just looks good for the town. Someone driving down the street in the middle of the day and both outdoor seating sites have people in them, it looks good.
I think you're, um, you're including sports in this. I have, you had conversations with families. I know that there, yeah, I saw it's even also, right?
Their, their seating is a little different because they have such a big sidewalk area.
And the question I'm going to ask is, has the uh business on the corner? Has showed interest in sitting outside of the pizza place?
We have not. They, they had no interest early. Um. And I don't know, I think they might be able, they might qualify if they're closed only on Saturday.
Well, I, I'm wondering about that because if we allow this. Or they ask to extend their opportunities at outside too. That's just something I'm asking.
I think the plan allowed for some extension and we delineated some spots with the, with sport in mind. Um, I didn't.
And I think the pizza shop was in place for one to two spots. Um, I tried to kind of chat with. Them now, they, they don't seem to want, want it right now, but that could shake. Tomorrow, they decide to sell the business and somebody that goes in could want it, but it is definitely in the plan.
I just, just want to make sure that we include the businesses that have the eating.
Yeah, on that side, we included eight uh. Eight different spots, so two just down from the sport, two across the street from the sport. Two down by Main Street and two across. So we have growth if they like it. It might, we might be able to shift those spaces down one or two to get it closed. Um, and then we have uh two additional spots kind of up by um. The coffee shop, but if we put a stipulation of six days, you know, and I think that's a good idea.
When you do look at this graphic, the spaces that are put in there, they were. Put in there also to consider where the inlets and the street are. So there, there, there isn't a ton of wiggle room. Just because we gotta keep drainage.
I like the plan. I wa, I like the plan and uh. Uh, I, I guess I'm gonna say the, the ball's in our court now. You had us print out a couple photos today.
Yeah, uh, so Becky, I know you're not gonna like me for that.
Well, I didn't care.
That's true. That, that's, uh, I know when John and I talked, part of the process was liability from the town. That's a non-compliant traffic control device in the right way, so.
I put it up, the town put it up.
No, we put it up.
The, the town put it up.
Yeah, we, we were trying to just.
Really? Okay, well, I apologize.
I'm like, I'm up at the town, put it up for a minute, I'm a great idea.
We lived with this as well. I mean.
Yeah.
People, I, alright, so all I'm gonna say, you know, is we um. Representing other municipalities, uh. There was an instance where someone, the business owner had put up a. Non-compliant traffic control device. Somebody managed to do something stupid. They had a smart lawyer and they grabbed on to it and said, well, you put this up and it was distracting the money client and that's what caused the accident. I'm just.
So we just get compliant, slow, slow.
I, or slow traffic, but a, a speed limit sign is technically a regulatory traffic.
We'll just get a compliant one.
Can we, so I, I'm just bringing it up because we had talked about that.
Well, listen, that's great information and uh I know that Dan's listening back here, so at some point, maybe you could talk.
It, it would be, it's, you know, slow, you know.
Can you just give us some ideas on the sign? We, we could put it on there.
Cause I will say this also for Main Street, the, it slowed people down. There were points that people would go. They, that stop sign on North and, and Main. I ate dinner at Benny Hanes and we counted, uh, sixty-eight cars went through two stops. Sixty-eight cars. So it has really slowed down people being dumb and that makes me happy too. So I was super appreciative of your slow sign.
I, I would say that uh I was out there yesterday and I know Rob was out there yesterday.
I've seen him years.
Without that, we got, one of the signs are down right now. They're just going right on through. It's the craziest thing I've ever seen in my life. You would think havoc would kick in.
Yeah, with the addition of the second stop sign and anyone road, I have seen a drastic improvement. Of people stopping there. Uh, we're, we're, we keep taking more and more steps, trying to get people to stop and slow down as they approach that seating area. Safety first. Y'all know how I feel about that outdoor dining. I've been behind it from the beginning in my thirty-five years on Main Street. I think this is one of the nicest things we've ever done.
And we thank you for that. You guys hadn't been behind us. I truly think it has just changed landscape and. And it's very nice. The biggest fire trucks that there are fit through.
Yeah.
The semis that get lost in translation and think that that's still the same highway can get through. These were all obstacles that we were worried about and um. I just, it, I think it transformed the town and. I would.
I think we're going in the right direction. Now, there was another picture.
Yeah, I, I sent that in as an illustrative example as to, again, when we had talked about having. Leaving room for loading for. Gotcha. I, it was just to say, this is why.
We left room.
And we did that for, you know, those are loading and then.
That, that, that was purely for illustrated.
Well, I would say that uh.
Not press the, the five mile an hour sign.
Yeah, I want to talk to you.
Um, you can't eliminate risk in life. And, and potential for liability. And, and I think what you have to address is, and I think you raised a good point. Is the potential liability town incurs by having a five mile an hour sign there. Greater or less than having people speed through it the way they used to. I've noticed a dramatic decrease in speed of traffic going through there. I'm out there all the time. And it has been a dramatic, am I wrong?
I, I look out my window every day. It's definitely.
It, it's been, it's a dramatic change. I think any potential risk, so much of that lawyer to say that, that their client was distracted. I think that's a marginal risk as opposed to the risk that we've eliminated by slowing the traffic. So I think it's a fair trade.
And also, it's not like our police officers are out there getting tickets for going seven miles an hour. That's where our police, uh, uh, go deliver anywhere probably. Is, is to slow people down and I think it's done exactly that. Dan, I appreciate it very much. We hung it up.
Well, listen, the ball's in our court now. And I appreciate you guys making the presentation. We wanted to get this back on the agenda and I appreciate Rob Maschino kind of. Got the ball rolling because next thing we knew, it would have been uh the temporary time would have been done. Uh, and, and then we'd been all panicking and rushing around. So the ball's in our court. Uh, I don't think we were gonna make a vote today because there was a couple little things that we need to work out, uh, but. I think the, I think collectively, we're all in favor of this.
Great. If you need anything from us at the Alliance or Central or Elk River, please let us know. We're, we're an open door.
Fantastic. Listen, I love it.
So you have recommenda, I'm sorry, no question.
No, go, keep going.
So you have recommendations. Are there any that we should be aware of? That, that you're putting in, in your, that need to be done?
It, it was, the, the recommendations were guidance for future applications and for the. You know, certainly what Public Works has been doing, improving the striping, the stop signs, you know, any, that, that's. That's always helpful. Um. In that the, the, the wider item in there, Rob, I think we had discussed uh informally was. Requiring a platform or not. Um. You know, there's, if you look at these different types of. Guidancees across the country, most of them do not mandate it. I mean, it's up to the individual at, at the applicant. You know, uh, and then sometime and the, it, it's not that there's. Any requirement, you know, like absolute for, you know, it does come down, it does add to cost to. Uh, it, it, it does add cost. So I would say that is at the discretion of the town.
And I will say, I was very fortunate to speak. We had a very lengthy conversation before we did what we did. We decided to raise ours because we should. Then we even raised the barriers because it wouldn't make sense to put the decking to raise it for free flowing water and then to have barriers down on the grass. My guys raised the barriers. So we have free flow, flowing. We also have two, and um, what are those things called? The concrete things on the grass? No, concrete blocks.
The wheel stops.
Yeah, we have two wheel stops that are, I.
They're.
They're here. They just need to go out there. Um, and. But we have them. That was one of the recommendations. So we were kind of really compliant, but we need those two wheel stops and they're here. It's just. I'm working every morning at five thirty and then working on tomorrow all day. And, and they're heavy, but they are there. We're definitely gonna get them because we've noticed somebody had. Tapped our um cedar shade on the side. It is what it is. It's cedar shade. That's why we put it there. Um, so those two things are going there and that was the one big recommendation of what we did. But I'll tell you something, lifting that deck up was probably the smartest thing we did is look at what's gonna happen today and what happened this morning. It would have flooded, it would have flooded and we've had zero issue. All the water's been going right on green, which is wonderful. And we had a pool at the decking because somebody dropped a credit card in there. That was fun. And I was hoping, I'm like, oh, there's gonna be napkins and it wasn't. There was nothing on there. So.
Well, you guys, I, I'm, I'm in all with, with you both.
Yeah, I'm loving what I'm hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just address the issue of re-deck versus not re-deck? I looked at that and gave that some serious, gave that some serious thought. And I concluded from the town liability perspective that. Where Brad's has a step down. You, the town encourages more liability there than it does anywhere else on the street where it first steps down. So, you know, people are walking and stepping off the curb and crossing the street or getting into their cars. I don't think it increases liability. I personally like it aesthetically. I think it looks great. I, I prefer the flush deck. But I don't think the town encourages any greater liability than it did anywhere else along the street or any other street.
Brad, you said you do want to raise yourself anyway.
I, I think that would be ideal. I think that it's a good look and, and I, you know, we might do it. In different stages since we're getting closer to winter, we might invest in the winter stuff.
And exactly. Cuts down the heat coming up off the ass as well.
Yep, um, and we also maybe from this perspective of the town. Besides safety, obviously safety first, but like I'm kind of like an HOA, like. Somebody just can't throw some stuff out there. Be like, how they're feeding. It has to be aesthetically pleasing. And it has to follow some sort of. What we, what we're doing, you know what I mean? Like I, I totally been up in it with polls, but lights up last year. I didn't do that, he did it. And it looks great. The sales look great. He does umbrella. So that's, there's difference. We almost need to have maybe a conversation around. If somebody else says this, aside safety, what it aesthetically will look like.
I think what, what we need, I think what we need to do anyway for Rob, I mean, submit our plan, I, I think that. It's beneficial that whoever would like to do it to submit their plan as well, you know, and say, hey, what do we think about this? Whether it's the Alliance that looks at it and gives a recommendation. You know, if, if they submit that request.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure that from the Alliance, we can bring that, being a board member and president, we can bring that to the Alliance that we can take that on for the town. After it's approved by you guys for what it will look like and a plan from.
Yeah, and outdoor dining, we can maybe set up an application where there's a, uh, something that we review. And, you know, look at materials and then give a recommendation to you guys to approve it officially.
Yeah.
I think that would be.
Cause we would love nothing more than more support down here. I, I want them down there. I want more. So.
That's wonderful.
And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Lou, do you have anything uh additional on your report?
No, I'm fine.
Alrighty, uh, I have nothing uh new to report. Uh, Mr. Maschino? Um, this Friday, the Arts Council on Main Street is having a somewhat unusual presentation. It's going to be centered around the art of tattoo. And several of my customers are going to be present and standing as live models to be viewed. And I actually have a few of them in various stages of healing, so they get to see that too.
Oh, wow.
Um, I also have some of my illustration art up there. Um, I'd like to thank DPW, they're all on dance here. I was there that morning and saw them in action. They just continue to impress me and I really appreciate you guys. Other than that, I wish everybody a happy and safe day, every day and weekend.
Thank you, love.
Gene?
Uh, no, I don't have anything tonight.
Charles, how do you like that?
Earl? Okay, well, isn't that something? Uh, I was gonna, a couple of things I wanted to mention uh real quickly. Lou's keeping us. Uh, in touch with all the construction that is happening right now in the town of Elton and. Uh, I can tell you, I don't think that I've ever seen the uh, the, the amount of dirt being moved. Uh, for one, that has been moved, but I also want to stress how many jobs that is being created now. It's gonna be a struggle because we're having a very difficult time finding people. But once uh, once we get uh the housing going in the, in the right direction with the amount of jobs that are being created. It's gonna be uh. Uh, I think everyone's gonna be very, very happy with the, the quality of jobs that are being created also. So it's uh. I'm pretty excited about that. Dan, I sent over to you and I sent to the board. Uh, just for your, just for you to take a look at was those ballards. And uh, I know we were talking here a little bit about uh traffic, not, not necessarily this would be used for traffic calming. But for even around where Squirt is right now, where their tables are. Uh, the chances of a car running up onto the curb and striking anyone is very slim to none, but. Those ballards actually don't look bad. Uh, you could bolt them right into the curbing. Uh, would it, would it prevent a, a car from striking them if uh, if it was bolted into the concrete? Probably not. Uh, but uh, it might give the appearance. So just a, a ball. I sent everyone that email yesterday. Of those Ballard covers. Um, did you see it?
Oh.
Yes. You missed plenty of emails. I hope I sent it to you. I said, I've been sending your emails to Gene Minter. Okay, I, maybe I did. Alright, well, that's all I have. Uh, this is the time that we open up the floor to the public and we have Mrs. Murphy that lives on. Uh, Main Street. Uh, Mrs. Murphy, would you like to come up and uh address the board? I know that uh, there's a couple of things you wanted to bring.
Um, I guess the first is the park. We want to get in the park earlier. I want a place full near and telling him I'm supposed to be in there. Like you did.
Mm-hmm.
So what do you guys think about five in the morning? Can we get in here at five? Just the summer months?
So just to address what's, yeah, so the rest of the board, I, maybe some of us are aware of what's happening. Uh, Mrs. Murphy goes down to the park. Uh, just about every day and during the summertime, there's a group that goes down there prior to the official opening of the. Of Meadow Park. And before we had a light in the rear that they felt a little bit more comfortable as they walked around, but. What we, the changes that we would have to make as a board is our uh rules on opening up the park is from daylight to dark. And they're going in prior to daylight. To do their walking because it's uh the humidity.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and uh, so that's something that the board, I think, has to address. It's a, a, an ordinance change that we would have to make, to make the hours. And what we want to do is we'll get with our chief of police and discuss with her on the dues it does. You, you know, years ago, as I mentioned in the one. Uh, messenger I sent to you, we had a uh, we, we did have a homeless uh. Issue over in the backside of the park and we were worried about the safety of our residents. Uh, not that there may was ever any trouble, but. Uh, we're worried about your safety. And sometimes uh, uh, you're wanting to get your health out there as good as you can, but it's also a challenge to make sure that you're safe. Cause our number one priority is, is, is the safety side.
Honestly, we didn't realize, I'm stupid, I guess, I've lived here all my life, but I didn't realize it, that you weren't allowed in there and I've been walking out there for twenty-five years. And nobody has ever said anything. Or the sun comes up, huh?
Do you park along the road?
No, I park in the park. I mean, the park's open. It's open all the time.
Open too?
Yeah, yeah. It used to years ago, but I mean, I can remember pulling up there and having to call somebody to come open the gate. Now it's open all the time now.
Yeah, the lot basically was, was, was closed during Joe Fasana's era.
Yeah.
And since he left. And since he left, it's now open. Actually saying, yeah, I agree with that.
But yeah, when that humidity hits six thirty, seven o'clock, it's terrible.
Yeah, well, I know the one thing that we're looking at is putting the new light back here.
I talked, I talked to Del Marva today. The light should be back here probably at the end of the month. It's in the process of being on itself. At the end of the month, the light should be back there. There was a temporary one back there before, but what happened was, it didn't last for a year, you know? The electric meter was probably about four foot above the grate. It was full of mud. That's what shoot the electricity out. So. Actually, we went with Del Marva, parked it with them. We're getting a big street light back here.
Oh, that'd be great.
It's big. It's going to be tall. It won't hit a last.
So we'll, we'll discuss this a little bit more, but we, we want to meet with, uh, I know, uh, uh, I think Carolyn's on, the chief is on. But we, we'll talk with her about the, uh, you know, once again, our issue is the safety of our residents. And maybe there's something that we can do to have someone down there at that time. Do you guys walk every day?
Seven days a week.
Okay.
Um, e- every one of us are six, seven. We have one guy who walks twelve miles.
Wow.
Every day. I do six.
Wow.
So it takes a couple hours to do that, but you know, you want to get in there early because when that humidity gets, if you can walk, say two mile an hour, which is stupid, but if you get in there and the humidity's in there, you're lucky to do one. It's just the humidity's bad. As you know, I'm old.
Well, we will have you an answer short.
Okay, great.
And your second, I think.
My other is, is the house next to me. It ought to be condemned. I don't understand why the town allows it. There's trash back there. The people that live in there, I think the one woman is beside me is a warder. But the house is falling down. They've got those sides rented. I don't see how he gets away with it.
What is the address on that? It's to me?
Two thirty-five, two thirty-seven. It's new place.
It's.
Right next to me, right next to me.
At, on Main Street?
Yep.
East or west?
West. My whole street is a dump. They park in the yard across the street, two or three cars. When they wind the sidewalk, they took all the parking. They park in my lane. They blocked my lane. I'd called the cops one morning because I went out and told, asked the guy to leave and he called me every day in the book.
If you made me this problem? Uh, actually, I spoke to Chip this morning. He knew that you were coming in. He went out there again yesterday and he, he's in direct contact with, I think it's, uh, uh, Mohammed owns that house. Uh, he's, he's had multiple discussions and there's an additional house, I think directly behind you that had all the trash. Is that the one you're talking about?
No, it's the one right beside me.
So the one with all the trash, he went and actually knocked on her door and I, and I, I think if you look, the one house, he picked up a lot of trash yesterday. Uh, after he knocked on her door, but we're on it.
I don't know how he gets away with it. I just. Here's a suggestion. I, you guys probably tell me I'm crazy. Why can't the town, like in-town limits, have something like a homeowners association? You guys can make money, charge each homeowner so much, but the need rent or these landlords let these people move in there and all this trash and stuff and find them.
Well, we, we do find them as it is right now and our challenge is, is that well, either, either they pay or, uh, they, uh, we can't get to the court system. We've made some multiple changes. We've had our, we had our town attorney work on this, but going back six years ago. We redid a lot of our codes and during this COVID, they're not seeing anything.
Yeah.
They're not seeing anything. It's a challenge for us, but I can promise you, we, when you see, uh, um, siding off of a building or chingles off, we're on it. We're, we are on it. Our guys, uh.
This is, I mean, this, this is not fit. There's probably six kids on the other side. It's not fit for these kids to even live in it.
I would say that if you saw any type of animals walking in and out of that place, uh, then, then we could probably contact the health department to take a look, but if, if it's not physically viewed by someone that you saw a, something go in and out.
There's, there's ground holes and everything else living in the back there. I had paid three thousand dollars to have turned my stuff put in the ground all the way around my house because of that house. I'd like to send him the bill.
Well, I could. I've been out here a couple of times.
Yeah.
Kind of issue, uh, since Dan's here, has the parking been taken address?
No, no.
Dan?
The house is actually across from me.
I'm just thinking of something because I know, I've talked to her several times about this. We try to get the, uh, yellow strip where they make that turn up and out there sometimes. They cannot turn into their driveway because that parking space right on the corner, am I right?
Ray hit the pole the other night because cars are sitting there. You can't, you have to switch on.
We, we take a look at it and I just want to make sure, I have been on that for the last couple of months with that parking thing, but it was at, at, uh, temperature and, uh, painting the sidewalk at that time. That's what was towed to you, so.
The police told me the other day, the driver parked across it. He told me that what yellow lines meant helping, as long as they didn't have my lane blocked, it could park there. I said, well, why have the yellow lines?
So, and, and that brings up with John, I just think we as a board need to really open to yellow lines and all that as well. I think we were at one time, and we still are, but a lot of things, cars, I would say, Rob brought that up. You didn't follow through on that. I see that all, the yellow lines. I mean, I, I got cars parked in the front of the house, but I got trucks and sacks sitting in there. A lot of it's all there, but.
My, my property is the only one with yellow line on Main Street, on West Main Street. The woman next to me said she wanted one and I was told, you have to call the town, get them to come out and do it. Whether she did it, I don't think she did. But I'm the only one that has the yellow line because I called.
And they're parking on it?
Oh, yes. They blocked my lane and they would pull in my lane when they would go in the doctor's office. And I went out and told this woman, she says, I'm waiting on my mother. I said, well, this is private property. You can't park here. She says, I'm going to park here. My mother's done. I could feel the red going up, but what can I do?
Oh, my.
It's terrible. I want to sell my house. I had it on market. And the house next to me, people would come out and look at it. They agreed. You can't install my house.
Can I have that address? Your address?
Mine, I'm two thirty-one, two thirty-three. I have a new place. The one beside me is a bad one. It's the two thirty-five, two thirty-seven. He pulls up in his black SUV and.
Well, very good. Well, Mrs. Murphy, uh, thank you for coming in front of us.
Okay. Can you guys let me know about the park?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See ya.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone on the Zoom meeting that has anything for the good of the town of Elton? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.